Okay. Well, I think we'll get started at six o'clock and thank you so much to our two candidates for joining us and also to the audience. We, I am a representative of the League of Women Voters of Beaufort County. My name is Linda McMichael. I'm very happy to be here. Even though our office is in Chico, we are the legal women voters of Beaufort County. And we take very seriously our commitment to serve our South County friends and neighbors. And so we're happy to host this forum for Biggs. The League of Women Voters recently celebrated its 100th anniversary. And one of the things that we hold very dear is any opportunity for democratic engagement. And hosting candidate forums is something that we very much like to do and hope everybody finds it useful. A note to the audience, I'd like to say that we are not set up to take questions from the audience. We will try to work on that for future forums, but unfortunately, we are not set up at this point in time to do that. And to all of you voters out there, that's why you tuned in right now, because we know that you want to be an informed voter. We would like to be sure to send you to Voters Edge, which is an excellent resource for all voters of California. California, it's VotersEdge.org. So you'll find all kinds of information out there. For the big city council, there are three candidates vying for two open positions. With us tonight are John Bush and Jerome Squires. Stephen Sherlock was not able to join us tonight, so we have two candidates. So what we're going to do is we're going to start out with our opening statements, again, two minutes. And how this is going to work is that Mr. Bush will be first for the opening and then Mr. Squires will be first for the closing. So, Mr. Bush, take it away.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Some of you know me, some of you don't. You might do well to those folks that do know me. I've spent a lot of time talking to them. They tend to stretch the truth a little bit. But anyway, thank you for having me here. Why am I running? Well, I've spent about, as near as I can figure out with my paper and pencil, about nine years total on the city council of Biggs. I started out, my first term is mayor for four years. And progressed through that early period into the time when I had to resign because of health issues and employment issues. I had to go up to Woodock County and work. So that just, I couldn't keep the position here. Then I came back and I was elected to a full term. And then I, recently, our mayor resigned. And I was appointed to fill that position until the end of the term. The reason, the reason I'm running is that I love my community. I want to serve. I can't be as active physically as I once was. So I want to do something that doesn't take all the physical strength that I was spending making a living. So I want to be here with you. I want to know everybody understands I have no underlying issues. I know what I'm getting into. I've got a world of experience and I'd like to share it with my folks in the city of Biggs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Squires?
Yeah. Thank you for this opportunity to participate. This is a new thing for me. I have zero experience in, in this type of thing as far as being involved with the city. I've lived in Biggs about a little over 10 years or so now. I do, I appreciate the opportunity to be of service. You know, most of my life, I have, you know, tried to participate and help people in situations around me as much as I can. I have some pretty good experience over the years as far as in, in construction and, you know, the finer details of that. And just a lot of, you know, life experience from dealing with different people in different situations. And I'm not sure exactly, you know, everything that will be needed in this process. But I'm willing to learn and to do the best I can. I appreciate being able to be, you know, an active citizen here in Biggs. I do have a little bit of physical limitation. I, I'm a below-the-knee amputee on one leg. And so it keeps me from doing all the things that I used to do. But I figured my, my head's still working and I think, you know, I, I can use that a little more rather than just physical things. And, you know, I just want to put that out there so that I'm willing to do what I need to do to, to help the community. And I think this is one way that I can.
Okay, thank you. So let's jump into our first question. The motto of Biggs is where the people own the water and power. So, Mr. Bush, tell us what this motto means to you and why.
Well, for one thing, it, it, because I'm a long time now resident here of Biggs, it means, it means to me affordable utility rates among, among other things. We, we, we have our own power supply company called MCPPA, Northern California Power Association. And we team with our neighbors down in Ridley with the same, same sort. But we are able to provide, we're able to provide electricity at a much lower rate than the folks that live out of the city limits and have to rely on, on the PG&E. And that's a direct result of the efforts of past mayor and long-term councilman Roger Friss, among other people. I'd like to include myself there in, in, in that. So it means to me affordable living, meaning to me predictable utility rates. We know about what it's going to cost us month by month, month by month, month by month. And I can tell you this much, that everybody that I know on the city council, and that's all of them, and everybody I know at City Hall, and that's all of them, want to continue to be one of the cheapest utility providers in the country. That's what that sign means to me.
Okay, Mr. Squires?
Well, I'm not sure exactly. I don't have the knowledge that John has. I don't have the experience there. But, you know, just in looking at, at that, I've seen it on the, the sign as you're coming off the highway towards Biggs. You know, I, I think it is interesting and I, I think that, you know, being a, a small town, we don't have a lot of the, the things that larger towns, you know, have as far as revenues and, and things from sales tax and, and that to really keep us alive, I guess. But I do understand that, you know, it's important that we keep things, you know, as, as amiable for the citizens of, of the town, that people can afford to live. I mean, this is, this is an area that doesn't have, you know, a lot of industry that, that is high-paying. So, you know, a lot of people struggle. And so I think that, you know, that being the case, you having, you know, affordable utilities is, is an important thing for, for all of us. So.
Okay, second question. If elected, what three steps would you take to make sure that the city of Biggs is on a firmer financial footing? And we'll start with you, Mr. Squires.
Well, I'm not exactly sure exactly how to, how I will be going about that. I think I have a lot to learn as far as that, exactly how this whole process works. And, you know, I think it's important for us to maintain the things that Biggs has been doing right in the past. As far as, you know, managing, you know, the, the affairs of, of the town, as far as keeping, you know, in charge of our utilities and, and being, having our public works handle, you know, things that are needed. I know that it's, it's been good, you know, I've had, you know, good experiences all along with any dealings I've had with our public works department, just as a, as a citizen of the town. And I'd like to, to see that continue. And I, I think that things are, have been running in the past in a, in a pretty good way. So that, that you know, the, these services are, you know, there for us. I think that, you know, there's, you know, there's always things we can do to, to hone our skills or, or do things a little better. But I think that all in all, in the past, things have been handled well. And I, I would just like to continue on that as I learn, I'll, you know, more about how the, all these processes work. I'll be able to, to give, you know, whatever insight that I can, you know, give to that process.
Mr. Bush?
Jerome, well done, my friend. You, you know, you came in here cold, so to speak. You're doing great. Keep it up. But what, you know, the only thing that I would be careful of doing, one of the three things is, is not come here charging like a raging bull in trying to change a bunch of stuff that's working. Right now, the city of Biggs is very functional. They just happened to be out of councilman and happened to be out of a mayor. And so they appointed me to fill a position. I, I don't have, there again, I said, I don't have any underlying thoughts about what I would do if I were on the city council again. I would, I would closely monitor this amount that we pay for our services, such as police and fire and just the basic situations. And we had an example of that very same situation just recently. And we had, the council was forced to make a very unpopular decision. The city of Ridley had been providing police service here. But it was the unanimous decision of the city council that we weren't going to pay what Ridley wanted us to pay anymore. And those are the kind of things that I'll use my experience to guide me through and hopefully keep Biggs in the good shape that it's in today. Thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about challenges. And the question is, do you feel that Biggs has any challenges to overcome within the next year? And Mr. Squires, let's, let's talk, let's start with you.
I don't know of specific challenges. I mean, just in observation, driving around, you know, like most towns, there's always little things, street repairs, curb and gutter issues and drainage and things like that, that, that will continue to always need attention. I think that the, you know, the different things that have gone on in the last few years, they've made a lot of improvements as far as sidewalk curb gutter, street paving. And I, I think that some, those are some of the issues that, that that'll, you know, will need to continue to pursue as, as Biggs can do these things. I think that just, you know, in general, keeping our, our, our little town tidy and, you know, just, just the normal maintenance. I think we can keep after that. And then when issues that come up, like with the, the police, you know, providing, you know, getting services from, from other agencies and, and that as those come along, that we can use our heads and, and make the best decisions we can for the town.
Okay, Mr. Bush?
I think I understood that. Could you ask the question again?
Sure. Do you feel that there are any challenges facing Biggs within the next year? Immediately or within the next year?
I, I, I think so. I think so. And this is, this is one issue that's, that's caused some hard feelings and so on and so forth here. Growth is going to be an issue. It's going to be a good issue or a bad issue or one thing. And I'd like to, like to say now for the first time in a long time, John Bush is not anti-growth, not at all. I understand that if Biggs doesn't grow, it'll disappear. So I, I would, I support growth, but I want the people, the constituents, the voters, to be a part of that growth and grow in a manner that pleases them. It's not about pleasing the developer or to please the guy down the street that has a piece of property for sale. It's for pleasing themselves. And I think we have, and I think we're in a position to be able to do that. The first time the developers came, I was mayor, there was no way. I, it's an awful thing to say, but I'm really, in a way, relieved that those folks had such trouble and had to leave town. They, they, many of them went broke. And that's not a good thing. But Biggs was not in the shape that it is in today to be able to handle them. So we have to continue to be vigilant on the growth issues and monitor them and control them. Beyond that, I think we, Public Works, the fellows have bought new machinery to patch some potholes and so on and so forth. And I think that that's another thing, just good common sense, Public Works monitoring and, and services. So, thank you.
Thank you. So you did touch on this a bit. And our next question is, how do you plan to engage with the constituents of Biggs? Should you be elected to the city council? That is, how, how do you see getting their input and their opinion and their feedback? And, Mr. Squires, let's start with you.
Well, I'm not sure exactly how, how that all should, should unfold. But I do believe that we should always have an open ear and, and take the time to listen to concerns as they arise. And the people that are, are in these jobs, taking care of our, our town, you know, they're, what they see coming or the, the issues that they're facing, I believe are most important. And that we should take the time to listen and make the best decisions with the information that we can get. And that's, that's the best I can, can think of there. I mean, that's, that's it.
Mr. Bush?
Yes, one more time. I'm sorry. I'm just recovering from ear infection and I'm having a little trouble.
No problem. So the question concerns, how do you, how do you see going about engaging your constituents if you're a successful candidate? Getting their input, their feedback, finding out how they feel on any given issue?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. You made my night. One of the first things that I did when I was elected to the council and then appointed as mayor is I called a town hall meeting. Let's set the chagrin of some of the employers of Ridley and so on and so forth. And, oh, John, you shouldn't do that. You're just opening up a can of worms. And so we did that. And we sat down and we had 151 people in the audience. And that's a large number of people since they were all Biggs residents. They weren't all from and we sat there and we discussed it. And we came to that same, I, I would, if I could do it, if I could do it again, I would do it again in a minute. I would go directly to the people and say, hey, you know, there's all this talk, there's all this money floating around. They're gonna, there's gonna be, there's gonna be some movement. How do you feel about it now? I know how you felt about it then. How do you feel about it now? And I would encourage anybody that's in a position to bring the town together for a meeting like we had, to do just exactly that, especially when they're starting their term or whatever. I just think that sometimes the voting public of Biggs is somewhat left behind. And I want to protect that.
Okay, thank you. So the next question concerns, what, what do you believe to be the top priorities of the city council for the next year? And Mr. Bush will start with you.
Well, there, there again, I sound like a broken record, but I'm, I'm thinking that digging our heels in, being open with everybody that we're in contact with, each other, the city administrator, the city staff, so on and so forth. And be given, we, we need, like I say, broken record, going to say growth again. It's going to come. And it's going to, it, it could be a very good thing or a very disappointing thing or a very ugly thing. I just think that one of the priorities of the city council is to monitor each movement that we see and make sure that it's something that the folks that pay our wages really, really want. There again, I, I, I think most people do want to grow, but they don't want to be ran over. And I think that among the others, other things, we have a brand-new sewer plant. I, I left when that first started. I came back and I see that it's almost completed. And getting that thing online and making it available, there again, for getting pipelines that the developers pay for to access this so that they can get rid of their sewage is going to be a big and ongoing issue over the year because they're going to come forth. And once that starts, we want to be able to say, okay, this is, you know, there's going to be development fees and this is what you're going to pay for. They're going to pay for that pipe from halfway down the highway or all the way down the highway to that new sewer plant. We've got the tail end, but there's a hole in the middle here. We've got to cover up. So I, I think that's, that's a grand issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Squires, so we're looking at what you believe to be the top priorities of the city council.
Yeah, first, I'm, I'm not sure what, you know, if there's something other than that. But what John said, you know, as far as, as, you know, future development, you know, things coming up right away. I mean, I, I too, I think, I believe that growth is, is good. I think that, you know, in, you know, the world around us, anything that's not growing is basically dying. So I do think that we need to do what we can to make that happen in positive way, in a way that, as he said, doesn't run over the citizens, but that, you know, that it could merge with us. And, you know, if developers need to cover, you know, the, the cost of, you know, adding development, I, I believe that that's only right. And I, I could see that being, being an issue right away. So I, I think that that would be the way, or that, you know, that's the thing that's probably going to be in front of us pretty soon.
Okay, so this is our final question. This question has come up in other city council forums and that's why we're putting it forward to you. And the question concerns the relationship of the city of Biggs to the county of Beaufort. And what, how do you feel about your relationship with the county of Beaufort? And let's start with you, Mr. Bush.
Well, there, there again, we're talking about a, a, a subject that I've been exposed to before. And a lot of, there, there was some I don't know, bad feelings. I, I don't like to use that word because the, the Board of Supervisors is exactly like me, like we are on a larger scale. They are the legislative body for the county of Beaufort and we are the legislative body for the city of Biggs. But sometimes when we live in the same county or the same state, we're going to have to work together. And there was a lot of feeling last time that the developers were going to cost the county an awful lot of money. And they spoke out against it. They and, and there again, these, I, I need to make sure that I'm not saying words that are, that are going to start a feud. I don't want to fight anymore, have all that. But I would like the county to understand that we can be a great asset to them if they will just let us. We, we, we're not here to, to, to add to the counties. The, the story back then was, oh, you're going to have more police service. You're going to have this, going to cost the county this, it's going to cost the county that, and so on and so forth. And on one side of the fence, it looked like they really wanted development. But they didn't want it our way. They wanted it their way. And they were somewhat determined to get their way. Well, there again, fortunately for both of us, we didn't have to face it. So I want the greatest relationship I can get with the Board of Supervisors. I know Mr. Kimmelshue, known him for years. I'm, I'm proud to have him as our supervisor. And
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Squires?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure what relationships we've had, you know, as far as between the city and the county in, in the past. Yeah, I'm, I'm of a mind that we should do our best to work together. And if we have differences, I think that, you know, you know, we can do our best to, to work through any issues that come along. I do expect that they should be fair in any decisions that, that they, you know, or that need to make is regarding their dealings with us as well as we should be with them. So I'd hope that we can have a, a good working relationship with the county.
Okay, so we have finished our set of questions and we are at the point of closing statements for two minutes. And Mr. Squires, you will begin first.
Yeah, I just, I, like I said before, I mean, I look at this as an opportunity to serve the community. I'm, you know, not as physically able as I once was. I'm not completely unable to do things. But I, I do have some experience and I have some gray hair, so I think I, I can use that, things that, you know, I've, I've learned in, in just my general upbringing to do the best I can to look out for the interests of the citizens of Biggs.
Thank you very much. And thank you for running. And Mr. Bush?
Well, Jerome, you did a yeoman's job tonight. You stood right up there. You answered your question. You answered them well. If you didn't know what the answer was, you didn't try to pretend. Good for you. Great job. Great job, Jerome. You just, you just did great. The the balance of that question, and there again, I'm thinking I'm hearing what you're asking me, and I'm sorry for this.
This is your closing statement. So just tell us something.
After I, I got so carried away there praising Jerome that I almost forgot what I was going to say. That was, that was pertinent.
Well, praise yourself, praise yourself.
No, it's kind of hard to do, but I will, I will say this, that Roger Friss, who was our past mayor and our utility director for all, I think, I think we figured seven years or something like that. He has done more to hold the city together than all of the rest of us, all the council members and so on and so forth. Roger will be leaving us. And I hope that one day the city can look at me and say, well, poor John Bush did a pretty good job after all. So thank you, folks. Thank you so much.
And thank you too, but thank you both for running for public office. And this concludes our forum, and we thank our participants, and we thank everybody in the audience. Sorry that we can't see you, but we know you're there. So thank you for joining.